Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Borough of Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council Regular Meeting, February 14, 2018, 8:47 PM. Madam clerk, do I have a roll call, please? Actually, let's do the flag, please. Everybody, please stand for the flag salute and remain standing after. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, and with every soul of its people. Please remain standing for a couple of moments of silence. First moment of silence is for the victims and their families of the shootings in South Florida today. The second moment of silence that we will observe are for some of our residents and friends who have passed in the recent past couple of weeks or months. Mary Nigerian, Robert Burke, James Mitchell, Carol Strauss, and former Englewood Cliffs Police Department Lieutenant Hofmeister. Madam clerk, do we have the roll call?
Mayor Cranjak?
Here.
Councilperson Versa?
Present.
E. Park?
Here.
O.?
Here.
McMorro?
Here.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Present.
McMorro? Municipal Clerk.
Yes.
Everyone's present, ma'am. M. Park?
Thank you.
Yes.
Would you please also read the Open Public Meetings Act statement? Wu? Yes. There was one item of correspondence which is listed there.
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required.
Before we open to the public, I just want to bring you up to date on a few things because
Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings
when we get to new business, a lot of people leave by then, and it's already late.
Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board.
So I just want to let you know that some good things happening recently.
Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing
Yesterday, I attended the opening of Unilever's 700 Sylvan Avenue Grand Reopening.
and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. I just want to also mention that with the sadness and the moment of silence that we They've created a very nice workspace there. just observed, we also had some joy tonight at the caucus early on this evening. It's what they refer to as agile workspace, which means that there's more people in one We observed and paid tribute and sang happy birthday to a local resident, Catherine Ladanyi, building and fewer offices. So a lot of people who've spent their careers working up towards a corner office are now who turned 100 years old on February 12th. sitting in open space. So we congratulated her, and she said she was too busy to stay for the regular meeting That came out wonderfully, and they offered me Ben &amp; Jerry's early in the morning, but and she had to go out and leave. Nancy was with me, and she said I could not have ice cream that early, so I did not do So we're not sure where she went, but I hope she's having fun. it. So that was very nice. I thank them on behalf of the Borough for supporting our events here. We also have minutes to approve the reorganization from January 1st, 2018, the caucus and regular They always donate food products, and I didn't realize that they have over 400 brands of January 10th meeting, 2018, and a special meeting of January 18th, 2018. products, but it's a tremendous company, and we're very fortunate to have them here All council members should have received a copy, and I just need somebody to move those in and approve them. at 700 Sylvan. I told them that the two best days of being mayor are when you get to read Dr. Seuss to Second.
Councilperson Versa?
Yes.
schoolchildren and when you get to dedicate and open new businesses and buildings.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
So we had a good morning yesterday. If you noticed outside, when you walk in, there's a collection table for the Office of Concern, food pantry in Englewood, trying to institute a program where people who attend our meetings could be generous and donate non-perishable food items that get distributed to the poor in Bergen County. And I think that's something that we're going to try to continue. I haven't seen it out there. I donated a few items myself, so I'm hoping people donated this evening. I thank you if you did, and in the future, please do so. We'll try to do that every meeting, and the next morning, tomorrow morning, somebody from the Office of Concern will come up and pick up those food products. Just to update you, as you know, or I don't know if you all know this, but at the end of the year, the PBA contract expires, and we decided we would try to start working with the PBA to negotiate the next contract early on. So what I've asked the PBA is to meet with us once a month. We met in January, and we met again this morning, to just create a dialogue about the contract and whatever other concerns they have with their representatives. And it's been a very nice dialogue so far, and I look forward to continuing that very worthwhile dialogue with them. So there's just one more thing that I want to address early on before we open to the public, as this kind of came up recently, and I want to read a prepared statement. And it involves a litigation that the Borough is involved in. The Borough is being sued by our Chief of Police, and I'll just tell you a couple of developments here, and you could digest those, and we'll deal with things accordingly. So, number one, in a litigation in which our Chief of Police is suing the Borough and others, his attorneys have produced over 120 audiotapes, which the chief either made or had in his possession of conversations between him and Borough employees, Borough council members, me, the mayor, sometimes with himself, and I believe others. While I have not listened to these tapes personally because of litigation constraints, other attorneys have, and we're trying to remove those constraints so that we could all listen to them. And it's according to a letter sent to the court by my attorneys, including in those tapes are also sounds without conversations. These sounds include toilets or urinals, we're not sure which yet, flushing and dead air. We also do not know if the flushing is in a men's room or in a women's room. Number three, it is unclear if the chief made all these recordings while on duty, if he used Borough equipment, where the recordings were made, if they were edited, and if other employees on or off duty assisted him. I, as mayor and as an individual, take the safety and privacy of all the Borough's employees as a very serious and paramount matter, and one that goes to the very core of my administration. I expect all my department heads to do the same. Number five, while we cannot now ascertain the answers to all the questions I raised, we are now on notice that recordings were made of toilet flushing by our Chief of Police, and we need to take every necessary or appropriate step to ensure that the privacy of our employees and elected officials are safeguarded when they use Borough bathrooms and restrooms. We do not know if the toilet flushing recording was that of a men's room or a women's room, as I mentioned, or if the chief was present when the recordings were made, or if they were made remotely. Number six, based on the foregoing, I'm asking the council to authorize a thorough investigation. Number seven, while I never record conversations, and I am not pleased that the chief is recording many of his conversations with all of us, with all of you, that is something that he has chosen to do, it's unsavory, wasteful of Borough time and resources, and kind of creepy when I think about it. However, no one, including the chief, is permitted to record people using Borough restrooms. Number eight, I have always said that I am willing to work with anyone who is willing to work with me, and clearly the chief has not been willing to do so. I encourage the chief to reflect on what he has done. I'm signing off with all rights and further action reserved. Okay, can I have a motion to open to the public? Actually, our Borough Council wants to say something regarding my resolution.
For members of the public, as I already advised the council during the caucus, there is a change with respect to Resolution 18-46. This was to appoint new litigation counsel for the Borough with respect to the matter of Park versus the Borough. Because we did not get, we only got two responses to the RFQ, and both of those firms are unable to be appointed, we are, I am asking the mayor to allow a change to this resolution, to authorize the Borough administrator to appoint an attorney to represent the Borough in the subject litigation under the same terms and conditions as already stated here, with respect to the hourly rate, the not to exceed, and going forward with the contract, and then that appointment would then be dealt with by the council at the next council meeting.
Which litigation was that, Ellen Park?
Ellen Park versus Borough of Englewood Cliffs. So that's the amended, the resolution will come up during the resolution part of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, everybody clear on that? Can I have a motion to open up to the public, please?
Got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand. Wait till I recognize you, come up. There's a microphone right here on the table, you can just come through the door here and just let us know what you have to say. State your name and address as well. Anybody? Yes. Yeah, it's a tricky door, sorry.
Hi, my name is So Young Ling, and I live at 195 Pershing Road, and I'm here to ask the mayor and council members to consider how to control the car traffic on Pershing Road coming from out of town, especially Tana Fly, because it's getting really out of control. I understand there is a laser sign on Pershing Road, which beams if the speed goes above 635. But that alone, I mean, that's helpful, but it doesn't help enough to control traffic, through traffic. And I actually have been in touch with Carol about, I mean, I sent her what Neonia did in terms of banning out-of-town cars. I mean, we have to do something about that through traffic, through traffic, otherwise residents on Pershing Road, and I think to a lesser extent, Demerous Street, they are, not Demerous, Chestnut, they are exposed to this unnecessary danger. They speed, their speed is like 40 miles per hour technically, and I do not, I do not let my kid outside without adult supervision because it is too dangerous. So either there should be some speed bumps or some sort of dress, dressing measure to prohibit out-of-town people come through those roads during rush hour, because that's really when the cars come, like mostly. So I would like to consider, I would like to suggest Borough members and mayor to do something about it, because I moved to my house about seven, eight years ago, and I actually can show you pictures of cars. They're, I mean, it takes time to get out of my house to drop off my kids, and that's not what our residents' street should be. There should be some sort of control over how our roads can be, can be used by out-of-town people.
Right, so we had asked the police department to conduct a traffic study, and they did so, and they concluded that they would try to step up enforcement on Pershing as the best solution right now, to see if it works and try to enforce the speed. We can't shut the road down for different reasons, that's what their conclusion was also. Now, Carol, did you get that?
I got that sheet for her concerns, I mean, I sent it to Catherine, and then they forwarded to the police department. I totally sympathize with the residents on Pershing, and I know Mr. Morfes is sitting there. I, my mother-in-law used to live on John Street, and they have a very, very similar situation on John Street, and they just race down that street, and I cannot tell you how many times Tony and I have had this conversation, that I almost got run over by a car just looking at her driveway to get to my car. I don't know what the answer is. I think that we need to take these concerns very seriously, and we need to come up with solutions to address them before someone gets hurt.
Yeah, I don't recall, were speed bumps mentioned in that report?
I don't remember.
I don't remember, but we'll follow up on this.
Yeah, that would be great, because I think it's more urgent matter for residents between, like on Pershing Road, between Summit and Woodland.
Right.
Because they come and they make a right onto Summit.
They fly down.
Right, and I think there should be some sort of measurement, like I, I mean, I would appreciate post-officers stronger enforcement, but I think we need like more, because there can be a post officer all the time there. So there should be some sort of restrictions, like speed bumps, and so that people have less incentive to drive through. They just should take either East Quentin or Palisades, which are designed to serve that kind of traffic, not Pershing Road. I mean, I make a left onto Woodland when I drop my kid. It takes me literally three minutes in order to be able to make a left onto Woodland from Pershing, because there is so much traffic coming out of Woodland onto Pershing. I mean, it's really getting the point of, I waited here because I want to tell you how bad it is, and I would like you to consider a pretty firm measure, measurement to control the traffic. So if you can look into putting up speed bumps, that would be, I think, helpful, because people need to reduce their speed in order to protect their car. So I think that's really the only thing we can do at this point, if you are not willing to ban out-of-town drivers go through Pershing Road.
Right.
I think we can refer to the police committee to take up another stronger look with the traffic department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tony Morfes is 26 John Street, Englewood Cliffs. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. I'm glad the young lady was speaking about the traffic, because we all have that problem. I'd like to thank the council for doing the survey on John Street and having the police department checking how many cars go up and down. But there's a problem with that. Nobody passes a light with a police officer sitting on the corner counting cars, nor the police officer sitting in the deli watching cars going back and forth, or another police officer sitting at the firehouse watching them. So the problem still exists. That's number one. Number two, there's a car that constantly parks on John Street to take the bus, and it's a resident of Englewood Cliffs, and the police department can't do anything about it, and it's causing a problem vis-à-vis the deli. It's a small little blue car, it constantly parks there. If there's the police, they can't do anything because the person really doesn't live in town, but the mother lives in town, and she has a problem with the house in Brooklyn or whatever, and she parks there, and there's designated parking for park and ride. And it's only because, I don't want to complain about the deli parking, because it's bad enough the guy's not doing business, I don't want to kill his business completely, but by hot parking, it causes, it causes headaches, or something can be done with that, that would be nice. Third problem I have, Ms. Catherine told me at the last reading that by working on the Lions Club, they could not give a check back to the insurance company, and that's why they were doing repairs. I did an OPRAM, and not only was there no insurance money coming to the town, the town didn't have to sign off by anything, I saw that in September, the one permit that was given was for renovations of kitchens, walls, ceilings, and that was done by Mr. Cibacino's company, and there was no permit for the roof repairs, and there was no, God bless you, what was it? And there was no proof, and there was no proof of any check given to the town to sign.
I don't think she said that, Tony.
No. She said there was, they had to give the, they didn't have to give the check back to the insurance company.
It was payable to them, for them, yeah. It had nothing to do with you.
Excuse me. The town owns the property. The check should have been made out to the town and to them. That's the way, if you look at your insurance policy, the town is a beneficiary on the bottom, Borough of Englewood Cliffs. That's how the check had to come.
Well, I don't have the Lions Club policy.
Okay, well, anyway.
They got the check.
We'll take a look.
I'm not really concerned about it, but what I want to know is the following. If we don't care about it, and we're not going to do anything with that property and give it to the Lions Club, just be honest. Just say straight, this is what we want to do, we're going to give a lease, and this is what we agreed to. We're all big people, I can understand that. I have no problem with that.
Mayor, they have oral litigation right now, we can't.
Okay, I'm not going to talk about that, so don't. The second thing is, the second thing is, I took pictures this week of the country property up on the south side. There's still cars there. I'm going to give you this, it looks like, it looks like a junkyard, and after reviewing, after reviewing the zoning laws and whatnot, there can be no cost outside of the commercial property that's paid. You can't have costs in the backyard. And the buildings cannot be boarded up the way they're boarded up unless the council turns around and changes the law, because the law says you can't do it. So I don't, I really don't understand why we have to look at a blight, let them put windows, let them paint the buildings, and keep them like that, or let them knock down the buildings, whatever his pleasure is. I have no argument with what the mayor wants to do, but don't make it a blight on the town. Everybody talks about it, and I mean, it's not fair for the people there either.
I agree with you. I agree with you, and I keep asking that it be dealt with.
But it's six months, mayor, six, seven months, people give him summonses then, let him?
He's been fined, yeah.
Mayor, it's just not right. It's not right for the rest of the people in this town, when somebody does something and a building instructor comes over and says to them, "Do something," and they do it.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
It's not right.
We'll make the call again in the morning.
Pardon me?
We'll make the call again in the morning.
No, no, it's not, it's not, it's not just a point, in other words, if you, then you have to do something, you have to, you have to do something, you just can't save the guy who paid.
Your points are all valid, with respect to that property.
No, believe me, I mean, it's just not right for the, and especially for the people there. It's just not right. Anyway, sorry for being a pain in the ass. Everybody should have a great Valentine's Day. That's what I had to say.
And he's wearing red.
You want the pictures?
I'll scan it all.
No, no, it's yours. You can leave it there. I guess have a nice life.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to me hear? Yes.
President of Councilmembers. My name's Ted Strange. My address is 6 Jeffrey Court Otisville, that's upstate New York.
I'm sorry, can you tell me your name again for the record?
Ted Strange, I do have it written on here.
I saw it yesterday.
Yes, correct. 6 Jeffrey Court Otisville, upstate New York. I don't have good news, and it's not about local issues, and in fact, I call this genocide by scalpel, because that's one of the, that's a title given by one of the investigators into forced organ harvesting in China. Their updated research concludes that China's hospitals transplant between 60,000 and 100,000 vital human body organs each year, but China has no real organ donation program. Here in the U.S., with the most sophisticated organ transplant system in the world, a patient can wait up to three years for a matching organ to become available. In China, however, the waiting time is measured in weeks. An organ transplant tourist to China, including one from the Borough, can arrange a specific date for their operation, which effectively means that someone to be killed on their behalf on that date. It's a cultural taboo to donate one's organs after death in China. So what's the source of these organs? Translation of these facts equates to tens of thousands of prisoners of conscience each year being killed for their organs. Most of these prisoners of conscience are, I mean, what?
Speak a little louder, please.
Most of these prisoners of conscience are Falun Gong practitioners, but also Tibetans, Liguers, and Hoss Christians. They are routinely blood tested and their organs examined while held in China's forced labor camps, detention centers, and like jails. A 1984 regulation, ironically, decrees that they and their organs become the property of the state. On June 13th, 2016, the U.S. House of Representatives unanimously passed Resolution 343, which in its summary section, quote, "condemns the practice of state-sanctioned forced organ harvesting in China," close quote. The European Parliament has also passed similar regulations. This has been happening for over 18 years, and still there's deathly silence on this issue, and that is why I come before you, the elected and respected representatives of the community, to work at the heavy burden of this genocide, as acknowledged by the House. China's total control of its own media outweighed on, so it comes down to this type of word of mouth, too, just divulge what's happening. Many dedicated researchers have gathered an enormous amount of data from current and archived hospital websites, medical journals, local media reports, telephone surveys, and other evidence for the 865 hospitals in China that have performed these organ transplants. So books are now being written, and documentaries have been produced with more comprehensive information, so I brought this package to your kind of attention. And thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll distribute it, you can leave it there, I'll distribute it. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Have a good evening. Anybody else wishing to me hear?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm Norton, I'm Willow Drive in Englewood Cliffs. A couple of things, I think the first, I would really ask you to leave your vendetta with the chief in executive session. It's not the coming of the office of mayor, and I really don't think you should bring it out here, because I think it really does show that it's a vendetta and not necessarily a response to a court case, because you had really good news at court cases, which I think you probably wanted to talk about, or maybe you'll talk about it later, but it would have been much better off in first session, which is the extension of affordable housing immunity to April 30th. That's really good news.
I'll be giving that report under my.
Okay, but that really would have been nice to hear in the beginning, instead of the negativity. The ordinance, oh yeah, this, this one I found quite interesting. I've never seen a suspension of an ordinance or provisions of an ordinance. I mean, I went through the codes, I have 40:49-4, which is the revision and codification, and I went through 40:49-2, which talks about ordinance, and I'd like the, if you, the attorney and you, the clerk, could tell me where I could find some sort of a provision that allows for suspension of an ordinance.
I can't answer that, it had nothing to do with the resolution. That was provided to me by the Borough Attorney.
Okay. So to the best of your knowledge, is there a provision that allows for a suspension of an ordinance? the negativity. The ordinance, oh yeah, this, this one I, I found quite interesting. I've never seen a suspension of an ordinance or provisions of an ordinance. I mean, I went through the codes, I have forty, colon, forty-nine dash four, which is the revision and codification, and I went through forty, colon, forty-nine dash two, which are, talks about ordinance, and I'd like the, if you, the attorney and you, the clerk, could tell me where I could find some sort of a provision that allows for suspension of an ordinance.
I can't answer that, had nothing to do with the resolution, that was provided to me by the borough attorney.
Okay. So to, to the best of your knowledge, is there a provision that allows for suspension without a revision, without a going through the whole ordinance process?
I can't give an opinion on that.
The Borough Council will discuss it.
So, so there is no provision that disallows it, and there is no provision that allows it. That's all I'm going to say, because there is pending litigation about it.
So technically...
No technically, that's the answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that is always a question, because we do seem to make up our own laws here. Okay, um, snowstorms, you know, we were talking about the walking path last time, and you kindly said, suggested to Mark that it be salted. Well, we did have one fundamental problem, it wasn't plowed. So, so salting wasn't going to help, and I, I think it's a real benefit to the public to have the walking path paved after snowstorms, because the roads are not safe.
Paved, no, not paved, plowed, okay.
Plowed, that would be really helpful, because it wasn't plowed.
I, I agree with you, I'll make sure of it.
That would be helpful.
I'll relay that to Mark.
Um, also, I got a letter from Verizon Fire saying that it's actually going to come soon. Have you heard anything about that? Has anyone on the council been made aware of that? Any dates, or have they notified you?
I think they notified Catherine, who's not here right now, but I've, I've heard that that's a good possibility, and that will take care of your other problems.
Yeah, just wondering if we have a date for that, because, you know, when you're trying to conduct some work, do some business at home, and you have no internet, it's a little frustrating.
Yeah, Ms. Duffy has an update.
We're trying to have a meeting set, and please, but actually with Spectrum, and then hopefully with, with Verizon.
And also, I had, day before yesterday, I had a peddler stop by the office, and it, well, it's a peddler license, and he was going to go resident to resident to talk about files. And I said, you're aware that it's only on the south side? He goes, yes, we want to speak to everyone, including on the north side. I gave him the application, but he hasn't come back, so I couldn't really ask him any additional information. But I thought it was interesting that they were going to go door to door.
Because I know their state filing says something about August, but of course, that doesn't mean that it's going to happen with us in August. It just means that that's on their, their filing. Taxes, I brought that up the last time. So I'm sure you're aware that there is a bipartisan group of congressmen that are actually help, want to help New Jersey in the area of tax deductibility, and I guess they don't think about it as tax evasion. There must be enough people who are willing to consider helping out those who are unable to deduct their taxes. Also, I was going through some old minutes, and I saw that the claims were attached to those minutes back in two thousand and thirteen, like you're approving all these claims. Is it possible to do that again, so that you could see the list of claims just detached? That would be really helpful. Thank you very much.
Subject to council.
Have a good day.
Subject to Borough Administration.
Yeah, can, can, is it something the council can vote on, or is it?
I, you mean upload it on the website?
Just, we're the.
They're part of the minutes.
They're part of the minutes.
Right, I will have them up there.
Great, thank you very much. Enjoy the day. Or evening, in the case may be.
She wants to itemize, just one number.
It's a list, right?
She wants to itemize, we have a number here.
It's a list, right? It's just a button, right?
Lauren Eastwood, 4 Willow Drive. I notice under new business, Councilwoman Gloria O's demand for two years of email communications written by ten individuals. Having been subject to one of those kinds of Oprah requests for my emails concerning the Englewood Library, which were a grand total of about six months of emails, I can say that these broad Oprah requests are very burdensome. I had, it took me all day to go through my emails and put together six months from the library, which did not generate a lot of emails. And then Lizette had to go through them, because some of them involved a, a sensitive employee issue. I realize people want information, but I think people also need to be real, real reasonable. I think they also need to play by the same rules they expect other people to play by. I note that Councilwoman O voted in favor of restricting my access to information when I was on the council, and I put in a request in October for certain emails of Councilwoman Parks, and as of today, I still don't have them.
I'd like to answer that. I think I was, may I?
Yes.
I need to defend myself. I have a response to you that that information was forwarded to the borough attorney for her guidance. I'm yet to receive a response.
Okay, my last response was that I'd have them by November seventeenth.
I, I understand that, but I, back then, I had provided it to the borough attorney to give guidance, and I haven't received any, therefore, I have not responded to your Oprah.
I need to go back then.
Yeah, all right, she'll go back.
I'm going to go back.
I also find it very disturbing that we have tape recordings of sounds that can only be heard in bathrooms. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a police chief, and I know that while I have broad rights in New Jersey to tape conversations to which I am a party, I also know that I have to stop taping in places where people have a reasonable expectation of privacy. And it seems to me it should be self-evident that a bathroom is one of those places. And I am concerned. Are there tape recorders set up that are just being activated when people go in rooms?
We're, we're looking into that situation, and I agree that people do have a reasonable expectation of privacy in certain places, bathrooms, locker rooms, you know, things like that. Not sure what happened there, we're going to find out. Yes.
Deborah Sabari, 106 Hollywood. Just a couple of questions regarding all the replacement of council. I was just wondering, I thought that the Geiger email offer was settled. I thought that Ellen Park was settled. Is that not the case?
There's some loose ends that have to be done, and, and council had to, council has to be replaced, for reasons that I'm not going to state here, I know probably need to.
Okay, so, so you can't state if they've been settled?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or is this, is this just tying up the loose ends?
This is tying up the loose ends, that's correct. It's, it's just the rest of the loose ends. Most things are resolved, and whatever has to be resolved, that's why we need the council to do, a new council to do it.
Okay. I noticed that there's an ordinance posting a salary of fifty thousand for the Public Safety Director. I still am totally against the Public Safety Director, but it also says, there's also a resolution to hire a Public Safety Director, and it says part-time. So is this fifty thousand for how many hours of employment? What exactly is part-time?
What do you reckon?
If you, if you in fact move ahead to hire.
The twenties for nothing, sir. Twenty hours for fifty thousand.
No one knows that. So Catherine is dealing with that aspect of it, but it is part-time, so we don't envision if they were in twenty hours or more than fifty thousand dollars a year. And does that have any benefits attached to it, or is it just a flat fifty thousand dollars?
No, there's no benefits.
Okay. And finally, I just want to say, in regards to your opening statements regarding the police chief, you also said that you in fact didn't hear these tapes, and I don't think it's fair to the public even, forget about the chief, that you pick and choose which portions of your lawsuits you're going to make public. This is an act of lawsuit. This is something that you've been privy to, you heard from somebody who heard the tapes. You did not.
My, my attorney, they were for your, for attorney eyes only, and ears only.
But we don't know.
No, 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 we, we do know, there's a letter that went out. You could Google, Oprah the letter that's referenced there, and you'll understand.
You want me to Oprah a letter in regards to your lawsuit?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, it's the chief's lawsuit.
It's the chief's lawsuit.
The chief's lawsuit.
And, and by the way, just to be clear.
Just getting information from his attorney.
Just to be clear.
To this lawsuit.
Those are the chief's tapes, the chief's tapes.
You know what? I don't know that.
Over a hundred twenty. Well, I do know that for a fact.
But all you're telling us is one part of a lawsuit that we're not privy to. So all I'm saying is.
You don't think our employees are.
Whether you're right or wrong.
Right.
You shouldn't be choosing just to give certain information and not all the information.
This is information that rises to the level of invasion of privacy.
I'm sorry, did you hear the tapes? Did you hear the tapes? No, you specifically said.
So you don't care about our employees, do you?
Of course I care about them.
I do. Well, then you should listen to what I'm saying.
But I didn't hear the tapes, and neither did you.
Well, we're trying to get them released to you.
So when you hear the tapes, then come talk.
Then nothing would make me happier than to put them all on the website, so everyone can hear them.
All right.
All right, anybody else? So I'm a champion of our employees, and I will defend them. Anybody else? Yes.
I'm Laura Loche, 12 Irving Avenue. I have to say, most of the people that were talking could hardly hear them, because they never put the microphone near their mouth. And when you put by your mouth, you can hear them. So I hope you will can hear me, all right? A couple of things. I had to go back and forth through these things to find the page I was looking for. I have a big problem with anybody taping in the bathroom or in the building, and I know there's a sign out there, right on the police desk, that I noticed when I was in here last week, that says, nobody can tape or use cameras in the building without permission from the police chief. But the police chief is recording everybody else that's going to the bathroom, whether they're doing number one, number two, whatever they're doing, that they're recording it, you know? I mean, it could be a loud and, and noisy recording, you know? It's not nice, and it's revolting, it's really revolting. And I am ashamed that anybody working in this town has resorted to those types of tactics.
We're investigating it.
It's, it's really bad, okay? And in lieu of that, I was reading the appointment here for the Public Safety Director, and I really think that situation highlights why we need a Public Safety Director. We need somebody to have things running correctly around here, and not have this type of nonsense going on. I mean, you have to have somebody that has a straight line operation. And in that respect, in your resolution, you're, if, when, if it's approved, you're only appointing the Public Safety Director till December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. I would have hoped that you would have given him a five-year contract, okay, just like the chief of police got a contract, just like the Mark Neville got a contract back when they thought they might be losing control. So I would hope that you would amend your resolution for the Public Safety Director and give him a longer contract, so that the person who was put in the pla, in the position can make substantial recommendations and changes and be able to implement them.
It's an annual contract, so let's see how things go, if it does get approved.
Okay, and then also, in the other part of this, I can't find it now, where, where you're removing the deputy chief's position from the table of organization. I'm really glad you're doing that, because I think that, that was said that the position was to be eliminated back, you know, two years ago, and when, when you leave a position in there, ultimately, somebody fills it. And in the, oh, here it is, in eighteen oh two, two dash thirteen A, you says, here if I created in the Borough of Englewood Cliffs a police department which shall consist of no more than one police chief, okay, thank goodness, only one, seven captains. Seven captains? I thought we only had two captains.
No, no more than.
It says seven captains.
No more than.
But why do we have to? Well, why do we have seven in there? I remember being at a council meeting when Joe Perizzi Junior was a councilman, and his father was the mayor, and they wanted to change the ordinance for a lieutenant, okay? And they were going to increase it by one. Instead of increasing it by one, he increased it to seven, from whatever it was at. And the reason he said he did it, this is why we don't have to come back and do this again. I believe that the numbers of offices should accurately reflect the people that you have in the position, or the people that you desire to have in the position. Seven captains, outrageous. Ten lieutenants, outrageous. Ten sergeants, outrageous, and twenty patrol officers. Right now, if you took the chief, the captains, the lieutenants, and the sergeants, that would be your whole police force, everybody would have a white shirt.
I, I agree with you, that, those numbers should have been different, I don't, we're going to table that tonight, those numbers should have been different. And I don't know how, what happened there.
I mean, that's, that's, that's.
I think, I think had a dovetail with the contractual obligation, we'll double-check that, but the numbers that I had understood would have been.
When Perizzi Junior increased it.
We agree.
They didn't do anything, they just, okay, yes, forty.
No, 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 you, you and I agree on this, so we're going to table that tonight and fix that.
Okay, well, I think, I really hope that you get the police director in and straighten this place out.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Karen Geiger, two seventy Alfred Street. I wasn't going to say anything, but I've sat here while you, as mayor, have talked about frivolous lawsuits, and tonight I heard the borough attorney say that the reason that we can suspend the resol, suspend an ordinance was because there's no provision that says we can't, so we're going to do it. I'm paraphrasing you. Actually, you said, actually, you said, no provision that, that allows it, no provision that disallows it, those were, those were the words you used. Well, that's why you have so many lawsuits, you don't follow the law.
Okay, anybody else wishing to be heard? Have a motion to close public.
Put the back in.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's turn to payment of claims. Can I have the Finance Committee Chair, Councilwoman Carol McMorrow, speak to that?
Thank you, mayor. Resolution eighteen forty-one, I move that the payment of claims, except for check four 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 seven three, be, be paid. You know, this is something I think never came up before, I have to recuse from that check.
We do that separately.
I understand that, but I, I really, I can't say the amount then, and for this meeting, I'm going to leave the amount out, because I don't know the amount of check four 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 seven three. So I move that the payment of claims be made, except check four 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 seven three.
One second.
Thank you.
Councilperson Zavusa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O?
I missed that part.
She.
We have to refuse on. Check four 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 seven three.
So we are going to have a second motion for that check separately. So, okay, thank you. McMorrow?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Wohl.
Yes.
Okay, so we need a motion for check number four 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 seven three.
We don't have that check for this one.
Who's the vendor? Do you remember?
Who's the vendor?
Yeah.
That you have to recuse from.
It's not a vendor, it's, it's, that's for the deputy chiefs.
Oh, okay.
For Medicare or something, I don't know.
That's, oh, that's right. It's about sixteen.
I don't even know, I didn't see it, I don't know.
Not a lot.
It's okay, just, yeah, I own that.
Okay, second. Councilperson Zavusa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorrow?
Recuse.
And Park?
Yes.
And Wohl.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And we can move on with the resolutions.
Yes, we're going to turn to the resolutions now.
Okay.
One of this.
Eighteen forty-two, appointment of volunteer firefighter, Joshua.
Mike Janovich.
The mayor said.
I need.
The Janovich. The Janovich.
Mike Yanovich.
So, move.
Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
1843, removing Brian Turnbull as volunteer firefighter.
Point of order, ma'am? Yes. Just because he didn't...
Yeah, let me further explain that. So, the two that are up, it's Brian Turnbull and Pierre Traut. They're both college students. And when they're home, they haven't responded to any calls. The deputy chief has sent numerous letters... I'm sorry, the fire chief has sent numerous letters and no response. So, this is the course of action. Nothing that they did wrong. There's no low-sap payments. Nothing has been made.
I reviewed it with the secretary for the fire department. And I wrote those resolutions based on the information provided.
We need a motion?
Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
1844, removing Pierre Traut as volunteer firefighter.
Sorry, Liz, I didn't call him on the last one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Woo.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
You want to vote, right?
You want to vote, right?
I do want to vote, yes. Yes.
1844, removing Pierre Traut as volunteer firefighter. Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
1845, revise not to exceed amount for special counsel in Chaffey versus Mayor and Council, docket number B E R L 346816. Point of order, discussion, please.
What's your point?
Why do we need special counsel?
We have special counsel already.
So, he's been the appointed counsel?
Yes. We appointed him already.
It's just the amount that's being revised, not to exceed. We've raised it because the purchase orders we have in place have... Are about to exceed the amount that we allowed at the beginning of the year. We're not changing counsel, just a dollar amount. So, we're just adding another $5,000? Another $5,000, yes.
What was it originally? Just refresh my mind.
Five.
Five, just...
We're trying to keep it... We're trying to keep a tight rein there.
I got it.
So, we're doing them love.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Okay. I need a motion?
So, move. Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
You have advised, I can vote on this.
Yes, I think you're... No one's individually named in that lawsuit.
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
1846, as amended by the Borough Attorney. Does anyone need a recap?
Let me just state the title. The new title is, "Allow Borough Administrator to Locate and Retain Counsel, Which Will Be Replacement Counsel for the Borough in Ellen Park Versus the Borough, Docket Number B E R L 6876-17, With The Same Hourly Rate and The Same Not-To-Exceed Amount." Stated in the resolution as is.
Point of order? I thought...
Yes.
We received a recommendation. I thought we had received the recommendation.
You received a recommendation from the Borough Administrator for representation of the Borough Clerk.
For the Borough Clerk.
The Borough still needs a lawyer.
I see. Okay, I got it.
And he didn't get the responses on our case.
Okay. Need a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Recuse.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
1847, replacement of counsel for Councilwoman Carol McMorro in Favaro and Simon versus Borough of Engle Cliffs. Motion?
So, move.
Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.? McMorro?
Am I allowed to vote on that?
That you're the named defendant?
No.
Yeah, you should recuse on that one.
Recuse.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Counselwoman O.?
No.
1848, replacement of counsel for the Borough in Geiger versus Borough. Motion?
So, move. Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Who's going to be the replacement?
Me.
I just want to make sure that's...
So, can I ask you a question? Why we need a...
Point of order, is that what it is?
Point of order, yes. Thank you, Mayor. To the Borough Attorney.
And what's the question?
Why?
Why?
Okay, so, without stating the reason why, the prior attorney developed an issue, and so, he removed from two cases. And I am... I'm not conflicted in the Geiger matter, so I'm just taking it over to do the last little end, little loose end.
Can I ask who decreed it?
Yes.
Okay. So, we didn't know about this conflict until just recently? Like, why all of a sudden?
I don't think this should... I'm not privy to all the details nor... But you can call me.
Okay.
And I'll see what I can find out.
It's out of order.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park? I think there's just too many conflicts, so I'm sorry. No. I think it's better to get outside counsel.
No.
McMorro?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
1849, replacement of counsel for Borough Clerk in Ellen Park versus the Borough and Geiger versus the Borough. Thank you. Motion, please?
So, move. Second.
Point of order, discussion?
To who?
I could vote on one. I can't vote on the other, so I don't know why it's combined.
Because it's also... You are correct. You cannot vote on the Ellen Park part of it.
But it's... The resolution's combined?
The resolution is combined. I understand that.
Let's put it at 1849A and B.
We'll take it... Yeah, we'll separate the resolution.
1849A would be Ellen Park versus Borough.
18-49A will be the E. Park matter, and 1849B will be the Geiger matter. And I do want to also point out, as has been in the resolutions that you got last week, this is also designated counsel for the Borough Clerk, should there be any other upper cases. So, we're just reserving this role for the Borough Clerk.
So, let's do 1849A, which is replacement of counsel for Borough Clerk in Ellen Park versus the Borough. I need a... Second. McMorro. Of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Recuse. Recuse. Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Okay. Now, the second one, 1849...
Point of order, point of order. Councilwoman O., can I just ask what...
I don't think I have to state why I have to.
Well, I'm going to ask, for the record, what your conflict is, because you did vote on these all before.
On which?
Ellen Park.
On Ellen Park versus the Borough.
I understand that. It's the law firm, the counsel that you're appointing.
Oh. Oh, okay, thank you. No, it's good.
1849B, replacement of counsel for Borough Clerk in Geiger versus Borough.
So, move.
Second.
Sorry, I just have to think. Okay. Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
Thank you. E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Recuse.
McMorro?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
1850, authorize mayor to sign agreement with green light events with 5K race organizers.
So, move.
Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
1851, authorize the hiring of part-time DPW laborer.
So, move.
Second. Who's seconded it?
I did.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
1852, authorize Borough Clerk to advertise RFPs for concession stand operator.
So, move.
Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
1853, appointment of a conflict engineer surveyor with respect to affordable housing.
So, move.
Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
1854, appointment of an alternate planner for affordable housing obligations.
So, move.
Second. Counsel persons of versa?
54, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
1855, authorize retention of vendor for building security. Need a motion?
So, move. Second.
Counsel persons of versa?
This is just a seek... Seek an RFQ or...
No.
Actually, the...
Well, find someone. And retain them. Hire them.
I want to say, this is to go out for it directly.
And hire them. And hire them.
We have not to see... Yeah, stop over there. Not to see.
Correct.
Right. That's why it can be done without a further action of the mayor and council.
Thank you.
E. Park?
I just want to say that these are allegations, accusations, thought forbid.
This is not for a conversation.
I mean, I'm torn because I don't want to spend the money, and I'm not sure what's happening. Um, but, you know, I am concerned also for the employees and everyone else, so, yes.
O.?
Abstain.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
1856, authorize the Shade Tree Commission to solicit proposals for completion of community forestry management plan.
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson Deversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
1857, suspension of certain provisions of ordinance number seventeen dash twelve regarding the creation of the public safety director.
Point of order, um, I have a, I have a few questions to the, the borough attorney. Um, so first off, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, first off, we were emailed this resolution, um, along with the resume around three thirty this afternoon. Um, you know, we all work, um, I didn't get a chance to review what the previous, um, ordinance was. Um, according to this new resolution to suspend certain provisions, it says, um, the following provision, provisions of ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twelve be and hereby suspended. And then it has certain provision numbers, um, like for example, it says paragraph A one is suspended entirely. I don't know what it said, it stated in the previous ordinance. I cannot just go by this and, you know, make a decision whether I agree with suspension of certain provisions or not. Um, I don't think it's fair for the council sitting up here that are working, you know, full time to be given, to be given something at three thirty. Um, you know, understand what's going on, compare with the previous resolution and make an, uh, informed decision. Um, so I'd like to make, I?
Respectfully, you are provided with all the information before.
I made a motion to table this to the next meeting because I really don't have all the information where I can make an informed decision.
You are actually provided with everything and then, you know, on, on meeting days, folks, um, just plan on, on working on meeting days because, although the meetings start at six thirty, when we have meetings, that's the day where you really have to free up your schedule and be available to look at what is going to be discussed at that meeting. Uh, so you have to keep your schedules free and, um.
So getting, getting the resolution and the agenda at three thirty on the day of the meeting is, is standard practice for you, is that what you're saying, Mayor?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Because I've been asking you for this.
You're out of order.
I'm not out of order.
You're not recognized. The, the fact of the matter is that, the fact is that, you, you, from three thirty to six thirty, I count three hours. Okay? Three hours is a plenty long time to read anything.
And somewhere commuting back and forth from the city.
Order, under, under, yes, yes.
Point of order, I just want to clarify one misstatement made, councilwoman. I got that resolution the same time you did that resolution. We got our agenda, I want to clear, you keep making misstatements to the public, to the press. We got our agendas on Friday. Ninety percent of our, of our agenda was there on Friday. So if you want to preface your statement and say that, that's fine, but please tell the truth.
Wait, I, I have a question, who are you addressing? You said councilwoman, there are two councilwomen here. And I did not see anything to the effect of the agenda.
You don't know the four.
How about the resolution?
All right, so look, 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 there's, there's a motion pending, or being, it was, it was proposed.
Second the motion.
That you table, and there's a second, uh, whether or not we table this, let's have a vote, uh, to table this. Which I don't advise that we do.
Oh, um, I'm sorry, before we?
No, 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 no.
Before we take a vote?
Robert's rules don't permit you to do this again.
No, I'm, I'm speaking.
No, we're taking a vote.
There's already a vote, there's a vote.
We're doing a vote.
Okay, then we could do it separately.
Let's follow the rules.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm all for following the rules, Mayor.
Who made the motion?
I did.
I second.
And, okay.
This is a motion to table resolution number eighteen fifty, fifty-seven.
Correct. Councilperson Deversa?
Yes, to table.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
No.
M. Park?
No.
Wu?
No.
Mayor, it's a tie?
No. All right, let's have the vote on the, uh, on the actual resolution.
Okay.
Have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Councilperson Deversa?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
I can't vote yes to this resolution, I mean, we have two litigations going on.
Yes, no, or refuse.
I'm sorry, who's speaking over there?
What's your vote?
Um, I have a real problem voting on this.
Is it a yes, no, refuse, or abstain?
I think you're bringing liability to the borough by voting on this, Mayor.
What's your vote, councilwoman L.?
No.
McMorro?
Say it again. Um, Mayor, point of order. Christian Borough Attorney, um, am I able to vote on this?
Yeah, how, how?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah, really? And Mary, can you? We want that in writing. Can you, can you put your reasoning on the record, please, because I'm having?
We're in the middle of a vote, you cannot do this.
Well, no, she said she advised her yes on the record, it's on video, so I, I want.
That's fine, I understand that.
I need to know your reasoning.
Okay.
Really?
Yeah, on the record.
Put it on record.
She doesn't have to give a, your.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring this.
You're, you're out of orders.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring this up with, uh, you're gonna have to give it to us in writing anyway.
I will.
All right, councilwoman McMorro, what is your?
I'll give a confidential communication to you in writing.
Can you turn this on, it's not paying.
We're, we're in the middle of a vote.
I got so many lawsuits. And this guy goes absolutely right, I mean, what?
Of course she is, of course she is.
Who's she is?
Of course she is, of course, of course, she puts out all your propaganda, forget it.
We got all these lawyers that we're hiring.
Carol, please hold.
It's all coming from you, you.
We have a vote, you're being disruptive, okay?
And why are you talking to us like that?
Because you're out of order.
You're very demeaning when you talk to us.
You, you get to vote, and then other people want to vote off.
You know what, I hope you're not talking to councilwoman Park and me that way, Mayor, because we're women. Because I see that, I see, I see the way you speak.
Oh, is that where we're gonna go? Oh, that dog whistle, I hear that dog whistle, all right, forget it, come on.
May I vote?
Yeah, she's voting, and that's all we're trying to do, is have an orderly meeting here. Orderly meeting, okay?
But guys, please, can we just get through any vote? Please.
Yeah, we just want to see a legal, we want a legal opinion, you're a borough attorney, Emery.
The public has to remain in order. She's voted yes. Mark?
Yes.
Of course, yes.
Wu?
Um, yeah, after speaking to the, last week I spoke to the borough attorney on this issue, and she gave me, um, feedback from the judge, and, uh, that's the reason why, uh, you know, this, this, this resolution, so my answer is yes.
What judge?
Mayor, three-three?
Yes.
Another loss, resolution eighteen fifty-seven passes.
Okay, eighteen fifty-eight, appointment of a public safety director?
Uh, for the record, let me fill in, uh, the name of the, uh, person that, uh, we met in closed session is Don Ingrassalino, I-N-G-R-A-S-S-A-L-I-N-O. The effective date of the, of the appointment is to be determined by the borough administrator. And paragraph number three is his name, and that's why we don't have an effective date yet, because he needs to do all those things in item number three.
Have a motion?
Point of?
And there's one, there's one, I'm sorry, there's one other typo in here. Uh, paragraph number four, authorized to undertake the duties and functions set forth in ordinance number two oh seventeen dash twelve, except for those set forth in eighteen fifty-seven. There is a typo in that resolution.
Have a motion, please.
He's not to undertake those things.
Have a motion.
So moved. So moved.
All right, then we have a, we have a motion in a second.
No, we have a discussion.
What, what we do to discuss?
Hey, can you, can you talk into the microphone?
You don't have a timeframe, you don't have a salary, you don't have hours, you don't have anything. Yet we're gonna give somebody a position of what?
That's often the case, we have to negotiate it after.
Yeah, well, well, let's put the car before the horse. Now we decide, so what is the guy gonna work? Is he gonna work twenty hours a week, so one, one day for twenty hours? Or two days for ten hours? Or do we have him five days, four hours?
I think, um, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, we're gonna let councilman, councilman Wu speak.
We're gonna let the whole council with whatever knowledge.
My, my, my thought on that, my thought on that is the public.
Fifty thousand dollars worth of tax pay a dollar.
My thought on that.
One second, one second. Uh, councilman Deversa, the appointment is through December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, only the date for him to do all of the paperwork is unknown. So the effective date is known, the end is not known, the end date is known, okay?
We don't know hours.
Yeah, I understand you, but you said we don't know a time period.
That's often the case. So councilman Wu has the floor, can you please be respectful and permit him to speak?
I think firstly, with respect to the hours question, uh, the public safety director, uh, is not an hourly position, we're hiring this as a salaried position. And, um, based on interviews that we've had with him, he's gonna put as many hours as necessary to get the job done. If that exceeds forty hours, he's gonna do it. Um, and we had, you know, a full vetting process, uh, we interviewed five candidates, uh, we had over ten resumes come in. Um, this gentleman is very qualified, he's been a deputy chief for eleven years in Elmwood Park. Um, he has managed the police force with forty-five, uh, police officers. Um, and, um, we think that he's in a position, that's, he's in a position to help us with the succession plan for, for the police chief. And to address many of the issues that we've spoken about time after time in our council meetings.
Okay, just to be clear, it was actually eleven years as chief.
Right.
And eleven years as chief. Deputy chief before that, and he basically went up through the ranks. Thank you, Mr. Councilman.
And I think fifty thousand dollars, we also talked about his benefits, um, he's already, he has all his benefits already, so there's no extra cost, we took a very conservative approach, and it's through the end of this year. Um, I think that's very reasonable, you know, I know, Mayor, you had your, your thoughts there, but, um, you know, we want to make sure, it's fifty thousand dollars, we have, we've had three hundred and fifty thousand in overtime, um, last year. And, um, when we had our budgetary meetings last year, we wanted to know how much overtime would be cut if we added one officer, two officers? The answer was, nothing will be cut. Um, and I think, you know, we need to put someone in place to help us address these issues, someone who's within, who's, who's from the inside, someone who understands the police department.
Question for councilman Wu?
Sure.
So, so then you're saying that this gentleman, this public safety director, will have a direct say over the scheduling, the, the direction of overtime?
No, I didn't say that.
That's actually not what he said.
I understand, but that's what the inference is, that he's gonna control overtime and control everything.
That's absolutely not.
And that's not the case.
No, 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 no.
That's my argument about spending the money for somebody to push papers around.
You're creating a very false narrative. Look, there's a, there's a chief's bill of rights, which we are very respectful of, we will not infringe that under any circumstance.
So the chief will still run every day-to-day operation?
The chief is still responsible.
Yeah, you know that, because you've asked that ten times.
I want you to understand that, Mayor.
Right, okay.
Absolutely, the chief will still.
Right, what is the person going to do for fifty thousand dollars? We all would love to know that. I'm sure the gentleman could handle the job, that's not the question, we have a borough administrator who certainly could also handle the job. That we paid X amount of dollars.
She's recommended this as well. Um, and so I'd like to have a vote, since we've had a, a motion by, um, councilman Wu and a second.
I did that.
Mark, um, councilman Park moved, and councilman Wu seconded. Let's have a vote.
Councilperson Deversa?
No.
E. Park?
I'm just speechless.
It's yes, no, abstain, refuse.
I just want to say I have nothing against Mr. Ingrassalino, he seems like a very nice gentleman, qualified, um, but, you know, Mayor, you keep talking about being political. Uh, the fact is, we were never, we got to his resume at three thirty this afternoon and we said this is who's gonna get appointed today. And, um, and the only people that were involved in the process was Mr. Councilman Wu, councilman Park, and the mayor, and none, one of us on this side was asked to be part of this. Um, and so, you know, not only the money, not only all this other stuff, I mean, I'm just speech, I'm really speechless, so I just want to say, um, I. I'm sorry?
You don't sound speechless.
Yeah, because I can't believe you're just inventing stuff and doing, you know.
The, the police committee interviewed him.
Okay. Um, so all due respect to Mr. Ingrassalino, but, uh, I'm gonna vote now.
O.?
I just don't see how hiring a, uh, public safety director is going to solve many of the problems that we have, uh, with the, uh, the police department and the mayor and the council.
You know what, why is it okay when, uh, councilman Wu makes a statement before he?
No, that was discussion, that was discussion.
No, it wasn't, no, it wasn't, it was while he was voting, I recommend that you watch the video later. Uh, my vote is no.
Okay, good.
Council, uh, McMorro?
I did advise I'm allowed to vote.
I would like, I would like.
I would like Emery to put that on the record.
She voted yes.
No, no, this is a, this is a different resolution, so.
You're out of order, all of you, we're in the middle of a vote.
I just need you to say you advise her that she can vote, that's all.
Yes. I agree that she can vote.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor, it's a tie?
Yes.
Ordinance is twenty eighteen, first reading. No, we're not. Okay. Ordinance eighteen oh one will have a public hearing of March fourteenth. Bond ordinance to authorize the engineering phase of Fifth Street Extension Improvements Project in, by and for the Borough of Engle Cliffs in the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, a local improvement to appropriate the sum of one hundred and forty thousand to pay the costs thereof, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. I'm sorry, who moved it?
Uh, councilman Wu did.
Are we doing it one, one at a time?
Who moved it?
Park. Oh, Park, and I seconded it.
Councilperson Deversa? I'm sorry?
Yes.
E. Park?
I have a question, point of order discussion, I don't know.
We're, we're in the middle of a vote.
Yeah, but, did you, did you have that meeting, though, with the residents, they're aware of this resolution, correct?
The res, the meeting was held with the, uh, borough, uh, borough attorney.
Okay.
Sorry, borough, uh.
Engineer.
Borough administrator.
Okay.
The engineer, DPW superintendent, and bond counsel.
With the residents?
With the residents.
Okay, yes.
So no elected officials.
Okay, yes.
O.?
Refuse.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Eighteen oh two has been tabled. And eighteen oh three, again, the public hearing, March fourteenth. An ordinance amending ordinance number seventeen oh nine entitled, an ordinance fixing salaries and wages compensation for all salaries appointed and elected officers within the Borough of Engle Cliffs in the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey. Need a motion?
Point of order, um, I don't understand why this ordinance is set up this way again, because you're making us decide on the entire, uh, whether, the entire ordinance, and that, I, I say yes to the formance adding to salary rates, but I say no to the public safety director. So it's grouped up, how can we, how can I vote like this?
Figure it out, I mean, it's, it's logic.
Well, no, that's, that's a lot, that doesn't even make sense.
You could vote yes, no, refuse, or abstain.
But, but, yeah, there's three votes?
No, we always, we've always put them together, and, I mean, when you do amendments to salary ordinance, you some.
But we don't have a public safety director as of yet, so that would be a separate ordinance.
Okay.
What I'll bring that one.
Okay, uh, councilman, yeah, yeah, councilwoman Park?
Yeah.
We're gonna separate both ordinances.
Okay.
So the first one will remain eighteen oh three, and that will be for the, uh, DPW.
Is that the one that's first?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No, it's public safety director.
Okay, so we'll do the public safety director first with eighteen oh three.
Is that okay?
And what's the other eighteen oh?
Uh, then we'll do eighteen oh four with the, uh, DPW. Okay? Okay, and they were both had a public hearing of March fourteen. And I have a motion for eighteen oh three, the public safety director.
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson Deversa?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor, it's a tie?
Yes.
It passes. Now, eighteen oh four, and I'll read it, uh, an ordinance amending ordinance seventeen oh nine entitled, an ordinance fixing salaries and wages for compensation for all salary-appointed elected officers within the Borough of Engle Cliffs in the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey. This is for the DPW laborer. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Councilperson Deversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That's it for?
Okay, um, that committee reports, um, let's, um, let's start at the end there with councilman Deversa. Do you have anything to report, Steve? All right, councilwoman Park?
Um, I think there is some confusion as to who, um, is going to be, uh, I know you came to the last meeting, Mayor, but?
Which meeting?
Are you the board of health? Are we signing Bergen County, or are they still currently month-to-month?
They haven't provided the contract yet that we requested.
I thought that was sent to Catherine.
It, it was, but that's not the one that we requested.
Okay.
So I'm waiting on that.
Okay.
But right now, we're month-to-month with them. What I had asked that, uh, the Bergen County Shelter do, uh, to accommodate, uh, residents in town who don't want to have any animals killed by our shelter, um, that the problem is that Bergen County Shelter is a much nicer facility, but it is, um, a kill shelter at times. Whereas the other shelter in Cliffside, uh, is a no-kill shelter, but is not suitable. So what I asked that happen is that the Bergen County Shelter, uh, will notify us as a borough if any of our animals that were sent there are going to be killed. So that we have the opportunity to make alternate arrangements for that animal, bring it to another shelter, do something, okay? But, but not let it be killed. So I thought that, that was a good way to deal with the issue, and, um, they assured us that we'd get a contract, we haven't seen it yet, so. All right, so just trying to work that compromise out. Councilwoman O.
Um, so, uh, just the other day, uh, I believe it was Tuesday, um, councilwoman Park and I also, um, have attended the Unilever, uh, grand reopening at seven hundred Sylvan Avenue.
How did you get that application?
It would have been nice if the mayor had recognized that we were there also, um, thank you, Mayor.
Good job.
Um, excuse me, I have the floor right now, can you wait until I'm done, and I'll answer your question? Um.
You're standing with Normandy the whole time, I didn't want to recognize you.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry? No, I didn't hear what you said, what did you say?
Said you were standing with Normandy the whole time.
Yeah, he's being, I have photos of you standing with Normandy.
No, you don't, actually.
Yes, I do.
No, you don't.
But anyway, um, you know, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, you really have to stop interrupting us when we're speaking.
What would you like to say?
Okay, so anyway, I, I do want to say that, um, you know, I pass this building, I don't know how many times a day, for the last twenty years, close to twenty years, maybe more than twenty years. From the outside, you would never believe what it looks like outside, it's just amazing. And one thing that I walked away from that grand opening was that, you know, we have like all these corporations that we don't really like, give them too much credit for, but they're just beautiful, and, you know, the, the whole renovation inside, um, you know, they really emphasize the, um, sustainability, and, you know, they're very eco-friendly, it's open space, and it's just wonderful. So I just want to, you know, um, see, um, that, and, um, yeah, it, it was great. It would have been nice to see other council members there. And, excuse me, um, to answer your question, I, I received an invite, thank you.
No, I, because I didn't, I didn't find one, so I didn't get an invite, so...
Oh, yeah, I didn't see you there, and I didn't see the other council people.
We didn't get invites, I was curious. Did you get an invite directly from Unilever?
I don't know, I didn't check who sent it, but it was in my inbox.
Okay.
What do you mean?
I was just curious, that's okay.
Councilwoman McMorro, and I've got a, um, actually, before councilwoman McMorro speaks to the, uh, COA liaison position that I asked her to help spearhead, um, our, uh, our team that's representing the borough on the affordable housing litigation, uh, is an incredible team. They've worked incredibly hard over the last month. Carol's been working, uh, very tirelessly to bring everyone, uh, up to speed and, and kind of pick up, uh, some things, and, um, we've had some good results. And, uh, just know that we are fighting very hard to, um, to preserve the borough, but to comply with the law. And then I turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Um, okay, uh, we had a hearing last Friday, uh, which, which, uh, I attended. Mr. Serenian, our attorney, was there. Mr. Martin was there, the mayor was there, I was there. Um, and I know, councilman Wu, I know you wanted to be there, but you had DPW, um...
Interviews.
Interviews. And I, and I encourage, um, all of our council members to make time to attend every one of these hearings, so they can hear firsthand, uh, what, what is being said. We won the motion. Our immunity, uh, was extended through the end of April. I'm, I'm not going to speak too much on that, because we are in litigation right now. And, um, our adversaries are watching our every move. They're watching what we say, what we do, and that I know for a fact. Um, so, at that point, all that matters at this point for me is, uh, that our immunity was extended until April thirtieth, and, um, we have to stay focused on what is expected of us, being compliant with the law, and, um, work with our attorneys and professionals, and I thank the council for voting unanimously to appoint and improve our team even more. Uh, I was asked by the attorneys to do two certifications on filings that were done. They're public documents. Everyone can read those. I'm not gonna speak to anything else, other than those certifications were filed with the courts. And, um, if they're curious on what they say, they can, they can either do offer requests or, uh, go out to the court, get them from the courts. Um... This is for me. I, I, I don't believe there's any, uh, other issue that I've, that, that I've seen Ingle Cliff's face, um, as a borough that's more important than this issue. And, uh, does it matter, should not matter, um, what side anybody's on, but that we work together and just, uh, get, get everything done that needs to be done. That being said, and because of the enormous, and I will say enormous, amount of time, and I take this responsibility very, very, very seriously, um, mayor, I, I, I have to say to you that I, I have to step down as the finance chair. I cannot be finance chair and do the amount of work that is required of me, as the COA liaison in this, in where we are. So, um, you know, we, we'll make another appointment tonight, we'll talk about it, and I know councilman Wu's on it. Councilman Aversa, you've been sent a couple of emails, you haven't responded yet to Catherine for the, for the budget. We need your participation. Um, you, you are on the finance committee, yeah?
I think I responded that I possibly contend I have to...
Okay, and if you can't, we'll work with your schedule, and, and I will be there to help all of you with anything, if you have questions. But I just feel that, um, we have to have another, uh, councilperson, and councilwoman O., I'm going to be making the recommendation that you take the position of finance chair, because you held it three times before, and that would be helpful in this situation. Um, and, um, anything you need of me to help from last year, whatever information I have, I'd be more than happy to work with you and get you that. But I just really wanna stay focused on this, um, the COA and, and the other committees that I have, and I just wanna be fair. We have a council that can get the job done.
Will you accept that?
I will consider it. I'm not giving an answer.
We have to vote tonight. We do have to make a vote.
I will consider it. You bring this up tonight at ten twenty, and you want me to come into it right now?
And I'm gonna make a...
No, it's okay, Wu.
I will consider it.
It's okay, it's okay, Wu.
With all due respect, we have two attorneys here who should probably be part of COA, if anything, and yet you put her in the finance chair, and you...
Well, we are kind of mixing apples and oranges. COA is COA. Budget is budget.
Okay, so anyway, um, I will continually keep everyone updated, and, um, you know...
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's an interesting, uh, session.